City Commission. The roll call, please.
Hunter.
Here.
James.
Here.
Johnsons.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
We now rise for the pledge of allegiance led by. Here, Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mark the agenda.
One change, Mayor, item ten D as it relates to a potential housing study. We're going to remove for tonight and there may be future deliberation or discussion individually or amongst, you know, a couple of members of the commission or myself to study that a little bit better, but we're not asking the commission to vote on it tonight.
Thank you. Minutes from the August fourth meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Questions, additions, corrections, anything for Karen? Anyone? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Special orders, none today, a study session. Now, I'm now a taser expert.
Get taste?
Now we're gonna have a gun session. Studies that firearms replacement. It's a very long drawn out presentation with great detail. And they don't like their Sig Sauer P three twenties. So who's doing the speaking? Scott?
I am not, but I'll introduce Officer Torres and Officer Kuaba there with our firearms unit. A lot more knowledgeable in this stuff than I am and they put together a little presentation will be able to answer questions for you guys on anything that you have.
Thank you.
I got this for you guys. Once we get towards the end, sorry. Once we get towards the end of the presentation, you'll see, this is just a way more depth version of what I put on the quick little PowerPoint just for the sake of time. So if you want to review it and just get the full details that's there. There's like a hundred and seventy six page report that fully outlines that entire thing. If you're interested in that, I can get that for you too. Okay. So. So the issue, right? So we carry the Sig Sauer P three twenty pistols. I'm not sure how familiar or how aware you guys are in the gun arena, but in the last, I mean, what would you say, Jason, three, four years, it's becoming more of a prevalent issue around the nation that there are what's called uncommanded discharges with this firearm. And what I mean by that is no touching or manipulation of the firearm in any condition, in any manner, any fashion, and the firearm is discharging, in some cases into other officers, into vehicles, into objects, and it's causing a serious liability issue. So across the country right now, there's hundreds of litigation issues against the company Sig Sauer for people that have been injured themselves or people that have been injured by someone else's Sig Sauer that discharged into them or near them, causing hearing issues or whatever it might be. So I included in here, did you all read my lengthy report?
Could I trouble you for just a second, Officer? Could you possibly dim the lights?
Oh, I have it.
Or has it darkened the lights? My eyes aren't as young as they used to be. That is awesome.
Yeah, so I included a couple of videos here that I'll show you in just a minute. In my report, these two links are there, but if you only got a paper copy, obviously you're not going to be able to just click and review them. So I am here. They're really brief, but they gotta give you a picture of what we're looking at. I'll show them to you real quickly, so. So you watch this officer in the middle. When he goes to apprehend a suspect and you'll see his hands are nowhere on his firearm, you'll see it discharged right there. So he's not touching the firearm in any way. There's no officer manipulation and a discharge. So as you can imagine, that's kind of an issue for us. And that's one of, as you read in my report, many that are going on across the country in police departments that are getting rid of this firearm. This is Milwaukee. They've had two officers injured by the Sig Sauer uncommitted discharge. This video is of the second and the officer that is searching the car. You can see in his body cam, his hands are in the car searching the vehicle and his firearm discharges and shoots his partner in the leg. His partner is tipped around in the leg from just bending over searching.
Department officials say they have no explanation for it since the officers say they never pulled the trigger. Investigative reporter Derrick Rose is here with that new video.
Derrick, that shooting injured another officer.
Patrick Kristen, the injured officer is suing gunmaker Sig Sauer over the design of its popular police gun, the P three twenty. That shooting happened nearly one year ago, but we just obtained the video today and it is the last publicly documented case before Milwaukee Police started getting rid of the gun. Some officers consider dangerously defective.
This officer, as you can see, his hands are in the vehicle, both of his hands. He's not dropping the hood on his holster, he's not pulling his gun out, he's not twisting, torquing the handgun. Yet, when he bends over to reach into the car. And shoots his partner in the leg. So according to Sig Sauer, their five independent actions before their Sig can discharge are just those listed right there. So your trigger is depressed, there's no trigger safety. If you're aware of what that is, if you've ever looked at a handgun that has a little tab in the center of a trigger, that's a trigger safety. It's very common with all striker fired pistols. Sig Sauer P three twenty does not have a trigger safety. So meaning impingement from any direction on that trigger, whether it be at an angle, whatever, can drive that trigger to the rear without it being stopped because the center of trigger safety is not required to be depressed. When it moves your trigger bar to the rear, it allows your captive safety lever, which these are all components that you'll see in a brief little thing here in a minute, but it drives that captive safety lever upwards, striker safety lever, or excuse me, lock rotates upward. And then that would make it so that the sear rotates downwards, because the sear is what's holding your striker, which is what strikes the back of your bullet and then causes it to discharge, right? And so then, once that is rotated downwards, it then lets the striker go forward, causes the discharge. In the report that I linked in that report that I wrote, the FBI released out of the ballistics research laboratory from an MSP incident that occurred in 2024, this is what they wrote in their report at the end of all their findings, after reviewing the incident, reviewing the gun that was given to them, testing on that firearm, being able to manipulate and replicate a repeatable issue. They created, they stated this in the report, that a reliable test could not be developed at the time of this document to test effectiveness of the secondary sear notch. So in the next video, you'll see what that is. But however, testing did indicate with movements representing those common to a law enforcement officer, it is possible to render the striker safety lock inoperable and ineffective at preventing the striker from impacting a chamber round if complete sear engagement is lost. It's important to note that the striker safety lock by design is the last safety in line to prevent an unintended discharge as it is in place to protect against a secondary sear notch override. So what does that mean? This will give you a quick overview.
The Sig Sauer P three twenty is one of the most innovative pistols available today, chosen as the official sidearm of all branches of the U.S. military for its extreme reliability, unprecedented accuracy, and unmatched durability. In this video, we'll explore the various safety features that make the P three twenty one of the safest and most dependable pistols in the world. The firing mechanism of the Sig Sauer P three twenty pistol has several safety features that prevent the pistol from firing unless the trigger is pressed. These are the five individual actions which must happen before a P three twenty can discharge. The trigger must first be pressed to the rear, moving the trigger bar forward. The captive safety lever then rotates upward. The striker safety lock will then rotate upward. The sear rotates downward. And finally, the striker pin is released. All five of these independent actions must happen before the P three twenty will discharge. Here we see all five actions in sequence. Step one, the trigger shown in red is pressed to the rear, moving the trigger bar shown in blue forward. Step two, the forward movement of the trigger bar shown in blue rotates the captive safety lever shown in red upward. Step three, rotation of the captive safety lever shown in red rotates the striker safety lock shown in green upward. Step four, as we rotate the view of the pistol to the left side, we see that forward movement of the trigger bar shown in blue will rotate the sear downward. Step five, the last action that occurs is the striker pin is released as a result of the sear rotating downward. We will now take a look at each of these components and their function individually, starting with the captive safety lever. The movement of the captive safety lever shown in red is controlled by the trigger bar. When the trigger is pressed to the rear, the trigger bar is pulled forward, rotating the captive safety lever upward, disengaging the striker safety lock. This releases the striker pin, allowing it to strike the chambered cartridge. Captive safety lever rotation is limited by the trigger bar. Only when the trigger is pressed will the trigger bar move forward, allowing the safety lever to rotate, disengaging the striker safety lock. Striker safety lock operation. When the trigger is pressed to the rear, it causes the captive safety lever to rotate upward, disengaging the striker safety lock shown in green. Sear, primary sear notch. As the slide travels forward, the sear is held in its upwardmost position by the two sear springs. The striker pin hook contacts the sear and continues forward movement until the face of the striker pin hook engages the face of the primary sear notch. The hook of the striker pin is held in the primary sear notch. The striker pin is now under spring pressure. When the trigger is pressed to the rear, the trigger bar moves forward, rotating the captive safety lever upward, disengaging the striker safety lock and rotating the sear downward, out of contact with the striker pin. The striker pin is released to strike the chambered cartridge. When the trigger is pressed to the rear, the trigger bar is pulled forward, rotating the sear downward, releasing the striker pin. Upward travel of the sear is determined by the striker pin hook. Therefore, full engagement of the primary sear notch always exists. Sear, secondary sear notch. The secondary sear notch is an added safety feature designed to capture the striker pin hook in the unlikely event of sear and striker separation without the trigger being pressed. Inverting secondary sear notch. In the unlikely event that the secondary sear notch fails to capture the striker pin, the striker safety lock will stop forward movement of the striker pin. Disconnector safety mechanism. When the slide moves rearward out of battery, the disconnecter shown in yellow is pushed downward, separating the trigger bar from sear engagement. Pressing the trigger in this out of battery condition will not release the striker pin. As we rotate the image to the left side, you can clearly see that once the disconnecter is pushed down, the trigger bar no longer has contact with the sear, but still has engagement with the captive safety lever. Pressing the trigger rearward in this condition will still move the captive safety lever, however, the sear will not move. Let's review these five critical steps.
So why is that important, right? So the reason why I showed you guys that is because in Sig's own video, they like to make the statement, in the unlikely event you have sear and striker separation, right? What's holding that sear up there? Two springs. We're all aware, springs, just like any other mechanical device, can wear over time and can have malfunction. In this video, you'll see it's a civilian armorer. He puts a pin in the back of the Sig and in the center of the breech face, you'll see right there, and you see a little flash of silver right in the center of the breech face when he pushes down? So all that was, and I'll refresh it because it happens pretty quick. All that was is a manual separation of that safety mechanism where afterwards they say they have secondary sear notch and a striker safety lock, right? So my question, and this is what I was chatting with our armorer Officer Kuaba about, is why would that occur, right? If they're saying that there's a secondary sear notch and a striker safety lock that will not allow forward progress of the striker, in the unlikely event those things occur, how can it be created? That to me is an issue. And the lack of information being provided from Sig Sauer regarding the issue, to me, makes me a little uncomfortable. I'll be honest, as I, you know, I mean, I've shared this information with other people. I've had people come to me with concerns about carrying the firearm. And as you guys saw in my report, I own one. I don't plan on selling it, but the way that I carry it is dramatically different than the way that I carry my one at work, right? So condition four versus condition one, completely empty, without a round in the chamber and no magazine in the gun and a hammer forward is a lot different than loaded magazine, round in the chamber, ready to go. So those are the difference in that. I included in here, I explained it in the video, so I'll earn the report, so I'll spare you the video, the time, but I included the Glock one. And just the difference in that is that there is a bar blocking the striker in a Glock. And so it has a safety mechanism in the trigger. So if you depress the trigger from the side without engaging the safety mechanism of the trigger, there's literal piece of material that will not allow the trigger to go into the frame. It smacks into the frame and won't allow it to move. Without that first sequence, the sequential safety mechanism will not go off. It cannot continue because it has to be that first. And then that drives that block up and allows the freedom travel of the striker to allow the rest of the progress to happen. So what does this all boil down to is simply gear, losing faith in your gear, right? So our job in and of itself is an inherent amount of stress day in and day out that is hard enough to deal with. And so having a loss of faith in something that you could potentially trust your life or the life of somebody else in the worst day of your life potentially, losing faith in that object is a big deal to me when I have guys coming to me concerned about what's being carried on their hips. I can't say that their opinions or their concerns are unwarranted. There's more than enough situations out there that you could call circumstantial evidence to say that there's something suspicious going on with this handgun system. It carries with it a certain level of liability for our department and for our city in the event that that were to happen here. You know, I work as a school resource officer the entire year long. Scares the hell out of me to think that that could potentially happen for whatever reason it might be going off if I'm bending over to hand it get a sticker. And like you saw in the video when the officer's going to pick up a suspect and it just goes bang, I mean, what, you know, I could be in a cafeteria, I could be on a playground, a classroom, whatever. So it carries a certain level of weight with me, just going to be honest about it. And then, like I said, the lack of accountability and explanation from SIG is just one of the things, especially after release of the FBI report. I spoke with the SIG rep for nearly fifty minutes about this issue, who said that there's a whole extra pile of information regarding that FBI report that directly counteracts and contradicts all the claims that that FBI report makes. So my question was, well, why wouldn't you release it? Their answer to that was, our legal team says we can't. I don't understand why you wouldn't be able to release something that directly shuts down claims that your gun is having a malfunction if you have that evidence available to you. You know, in law enforcement work in the realm of evidence, if you have something that shows something the opposite of what someone's claiming, you bring that forward. It helps your case. So lastly, I mean, I do like to, and I even put it in my report, I'm not saying that every single instance that somebody said that this gun was an uncommanded discharge is one hundred percent on the firearm. Not saying that in any capacity. There's negligence and lack of training and poor gear across the spectrum of all types of different guns, training departments, you name it. So I'm not naive to the fact that somebody could be negligent and shoot someone on accident because they're being stupid with a firearm. That happens across the entire world all the time. But I, along with my firearms team that I've spoken with, feel as though there's enough strangeness going on with the lack of answers and the videos that are occurring, like you just observed, where officers aren't even touching the gun. There's nothing around touching it and it goes off. That means a problem. And I recently heard a, I guess what you would call an analogy, you know, you go to a softball game and they're calling for a thunderstorm. Chances of somebody getting struck by lightning is extremely small, but they still call the thunderstorm, or I mean, they still call the softball game. So yeah, it could be like getting struck by lightning. I mean, as I said in my report, I do competition shooting. I've shot my duty gun over fourteen thousand rounds of ammunition, I've never had a problem. I shoot the one that I own, probably over eight thousand rounds of ammunition, I've never had an issue. That's not to say there can't be an issue. I'm just saying I have extensively operated this firearm. Do I have a distrust with it personally? Not probably as much as some others might. But I also have extensive operation and time with the platform, so I have a little bit of a different perspective. So with that in mind, I thought, and along with my team, we should propose to go with new firearms to kind of quell the suspicion, quell the angst throughout our department, through our officers that may not be very well versed in firearms and maybe getting a little bit uncomfortable with what they're carrying. With that comes a possibility for advancement in gear. So I don't know if any of you guys ever heard of weapon mounted optics or red dot optics? So that sheet that I just gave you guys is a seven plus year study that Sage Diagnostics did on red dot usage in duty handguns for police departments. So they gave them to officers that had no experience with red dot optics, they gave them to officers with experience of red dot optics, and they ran them through piles of scenario based shooting scenarios. What they found, and what you can see in there, is a dramatic improvement in accuracy, target acquisition, and consistent shot placement across officers that otherwise haven't had that and were shooting iron sights before. And so what that proves is these items, although do add a cost, right? They show a significant improvement across the board in those factors of accuracy, shot placement, target acquisition, and follow up shots on a potential target. What does that mean for us? Well, that means with limited amount of time we have training, you can improve officers faster with better gear and you can decrease the likelihood of poor shot placement or misses that could impact somebody else in the event that an officer had to use their service pistol. And the reason for that is with a red dot, you have what's called one focal plane. And all that means is you have to look at your target. And so if anybody's ever looked through a scope and you look at your target with both your eyes open and your reticle overlay over top of the target. It's called co witnessing a sight picture. When you use iron sights, you have three focal planes. You have your rear sight, your front sight, and the target. You have to line all three of those up to make an accurate sight picture and then pull your trigger. That is where you have a lot of issue with officers having an accuracy issue, officers having a quick to target, quick to accuracy, quick to acquiring your target issue. And it's a problem that we face as a training cadre all the time. Because without significant levels of repetition at it, just like anything else, it never really becomes very good. But if you can use advancements in technology, like what we have today, including red dot mounted optics, you can find that with still training, but with training that can be progressed a lot quicker, once you explain the fundamentals, you can get people into a better position where they're making better shots, they're having better acquisition, they're having better performance across the board when it comes to the usage of their duty pistol. And so with that in mind, I included into this the report and I included into this some pricing for packages to include a red dot, but as well, just the new firearm platform, it's called MOS for Glock pistols. And all that means is a fancy words for they cut the slide and they screw in a plate so that in the event we wanted to make it that an individual officer, if they want to purchase a red dot and put it into our policy that you can only buy X, Y, Z red dots, right? If an individual officer wants to purchase one and put it on their gun for that advancement, they can purchase one of the guns ready to have it mounted to it if we didn't want to go the route of just buying them with them. So I included all those things in here. And I have a spreadsheet that is significantly larger and has a lot more stuff on it, but this is a overview of it. So we tried getting, I think we tried reaching out to five different people. These are the only two, including the Glock rep, that got back with us with numbers. The other people literally said, we won't be able to beat their prices, so there's no point in us sending you a quote. So I thought that was kind of interesting. But if you look at, so a Glock forty five is basically the Glock seventeen, so it's the standard issued duty pistol across the board for Glocks. They call it the forty five now, it's becoming the most popular. So the standard version for Michigan Police Equipment is just under nine thousand dollars. This is for our current staffing number, I think we're at sixteen, seventeen, something like that, of total officers right now. But we get extra just for the factor of if someone has a malfunction, a break or a part needs to be replaced, whatever. Or we get new hires, we have extra guns we can give to someone. If somebody gets tossed into the river and your gun has to be taken out of service to be cleaned thoroughly, dried out, all that stuff, we can give you a new one in the timeframe it takes for that to go on. So each of these prices are four twenty two units. As you can see, Acme Sports was ten thousand four fifty. The MLS, like I said, is just, the only difference between that and the standard is the plate that is milled into the slide to be able to be ready to accept an optic in the event that we or an officer individually would be allowed to purchase them. All it is, is take some screws out, put the screws back in with an optic on top, big, big move, you have an optic. And then lastly, like I said, the number goes up significantly more because you add a, you know, another three hundred and fifty dollar item on top of a gun, the number jumps up almost double. So the Acme Sports did not offer a package for these. They did offer the MOS model, but they did not offer a package. And all that means is Glock will put them on for you and send them to you from the factory. Everything's milled, ready to go, in zero. So they give you a base zero and everything's kind of ready to go. The reason why the, it's called the Delta Point Pro, the DPP that's on here, in that pack that I gave you, there's a graph in there that shows a list of red dots that were heavily tested through drop testing, impact testing, smacking the lenses, all those types of things, weather elements, extreme cold, extreme heat. And the Delta Point Pro and the Trigicon SRO, or excuse me, RMR were the two that led the charge, right? Now, the Trigicon RMR by itself is like a seven hundred and fifty dollar red dot. This one is three. So it's a dramatic difference, but it's still performed the same. So I asked for them to give me a package price and just what that would cost. So these are the prices there. At the bottom here, you see Alien Gear Safari Land. That's with the cost of outfitting each officer with a new holster. Because our Sig three twenty holsters will not be fitted or able to take this firearm, so you'd have to get new holsters as well. So the bottom list here is where you see that with the holsters. And then the very last thing, the Acme Sports, a lot of places are not willing to buy back three twenties, given the nature of everything that I kind of talked about briefly. Acme Sports is willing to purchase back. So they offer a two hundred and seventy five dollar credit per Sig three twenty that's in fully functioning order with three magazines. That comes out to just under sixty five hundred dollars. That would be kind of a credit if you were to purchase through Acme Sports for those handguns. So that takes a, say you were to go with the MOS with the Alien Gear, you're down from sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety, you're down to ten thousand dollars.
So. It doesn't have a red dot.
No, it doesn't. It's, the MOS is just the plates milled out of the slide to accept a red dot. The only one that you could get.
Why doesn't Acme have a red dot package?
Acme doesn't.
Why?
I don't know, they wouldn't provide with one.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
I agree with you entirely.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
It's not done yet.
Oh, you're not done yet?
No, that's it, that's the end.
Okay.
So.
I thought I saw it was the last slide.
Yeah, it is the last one.
So how long have we had our current service weapons in?
I believe we've had them since two thousand and eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
And how long typically do weapons stay in service before they're retired?
We had our two two sixes for how many years, Jason?
I believe our two two sixes were in service for about fifteen years before we replaced them.
Is that like an industry recommendation or?
It's not. SIG bases replacement of parts on round counts. Like Officer Torres shoots his duty gun a lot more than most officers, so his has had more service than majority of our department. And it just, it all depends on round, like the next service that's due for our guns, which they're coming up on, is I believe we paid right around fifty dollars, it's going to be right around fifty dollars per gun to service that.
Yeah, because back in, back in what, May is when you did the replacement parts online and that was just over fourteen thousand. And I think it's twenty, correct? That SIG recommends a full.
Yes.
So if I were to keep shooting my duty gun to the point where I hit almost twenty thousand rounds, that gun would basically just get replaced. Because we'd either buy a whole new gun or buy every component for it that Jason, the armor, would have to replace and that arguably is the same price as just buying a new firearm.
At the, at the twenty thousand round, about the only thing that's not replaced on the gun would be the barrel.
Okay.
How many times is the gun have we had? I don't remember. I don't remember. I've lived here forty years. Don't remember a time when they said a, a gun was fired.
You mean on duty?
Yeah.
Like line of duty firing?
Yeah.
I have been here for almost eleven and a half and it has not happened since I've been here. Numerous times are they would, you know, drawn from their holster, but I have not had them, I have not experienced that with our department. I mean, I, has it even been in your time that you've not been in the twenty-six years I've been here? So, so that's a great thing, actually. Yeah, I was saying, it's incredibly fortunate it doesn't happen. But you know, I'd hate for it, the one time for it to be on our record is that it wasn't even intended for it to occur.
Maybe good more.
Um, I was just curious with the video that you didn't show, um, being that we saw the one video and so that means anybody who watches this on YouTube later or wants to do the research. Is it possible to watch that section just so we can actually get a visual of?
Hundreds of everybody mutual customer access to car insurance. That's great, but can you ask your friend to stop digging into the green? I can ask. But he's not going to. Only pay for what you need.
They don't believe how toxic this is. If you're still using a plastic or wooden cutting board, you need to hear this.
How a Glock works. As the trigger is pulled, the trigger bar pulls the firing pin back. The connector guides the trigger bar downward, releasing the firing pin and allowing it to strike the bullet primer. The expanding gases from the powder charge propel the bullet out of the barrel. The recoil forces the slide back, unlocking the barrel as it tilts downward and allows the extractor to remove the spent cartridge from the chamber. As the cartridge case is fully extracted, it comes into contact with the ejector and is forcefully ejected from the firearm. As the slide moves forward, the bottom rail of the slide strips a new cartridge from the magazine and pushes it up the ramp of the barrel and into the chamber. The cycle is now complete and the Glock is ready to fire the next round. As the slide moves back, the hook on the connector is forced inward. This allows the trigger bar to move upward. As the slide returns forward, the trigger bar is then able to retain the firing pin. Releasing the trigger allows the connector to move back into place, again enabling the downward movement of the trigger bar. The Glock contains three safeties. The first is the trigger safety. The trigger cannot be pulled back unless the safety is engaged, allowing it to move past the frame. The second is the firing pin safety. The firing pin cannot move past the safety unless the trigger bar has pushed it up, allowing the firing pin to move past this safety. The final is the drop safety. The trigger bar is held in place by the housing. The firing pin cannot move forward unless the trigger bar has moved back and cleared the ramp of this housing. The inside of the barrel contains polygonal rifling. This rifling.
So that's the safety mechanisms of the other firearm. So as you guys saw, it's got this block right here. And that block right there, unless that trigger safety is defeated, to drive that trigger rearward, it will not allow that block to push up out of the way of the striker to even allow access to the channel of the breech face to strike a new round.
So with the new gun, somebody has to be the instructor, so somebody has to go for courses on that? And then do you have to do all new courses for the officers?
Instructor course is the same. Um, so once, so we're all certified pistol instructors. It doesn't matter what pistol you have, we can instruct as pistol instructors. Um, the last pistol instructor, of course, I had, I think there was SIGs, Smith and Wesson's and Glocks, all the same course, so that doesn't matter. What we would have to do is send at least one person to be a Glock armor so we can do in-house repairs of the firearm. Fortunately, there's ample amounts of those all over the state all the time. Um, I forgot what I had sent to you. Is the shared drive accessible on this? No? Okay. So in the, in the complete spreadsheet that I have, in the event this were to go forward, that you guys would receive, it's got in there prices for armor school, it's got in there prices for all that different type of stuff. So it shows it all in a easier to understand format, whether it be per officer and things like that.
One of the options you presented us with, because there were three, was to add a safety.
Yeah, so there was, there was three that I presented to the chief and deputy chief, which were basically to continue as we are and try to dramatically increase safety, training regarding handling and operation of the firearm and just stay the course and hope that, you know, we never have any type of issues with it. Um, and that was based solely on my experience with the weapons platform. Um, that was my reasoning for that is just I've extensively used it. And so I was like, if that's the route you want to go, then I can start working on building extensive safety, you know, trainings and we can really work at people ensuring we're not manipulating the gun or messing with it in any way, shape, or form unless it needs to be taken out of the holster. Um, the second option was installing a manual safety. And so all that simply is, is it makes it from the SIG three twenty to the M eighteen, correct? The, the military model. Because all the military additions have what's called an external manual safety on the slide of the gun. And so that is an additional impingement of the operation of the firearm, which it wouldn't allow anything to happen, won't even allow the trigger to be pulled unless the safety is depressed. That in and of itself, that component isn't very expensive. You would have to buy all new frames for the guns, which I don't know what the prices are exactly on those. I know the SIG rep said he would be willing to offer some of them to us in the event that that was a route we were looking at. The problems that come along with that is for, since two thousand eighteen, we've trained officers on a sequence of draw and fire with a striker fired pistol, right? And so you add an element to that. I'm sure you guys probably heard like it takes ten thousand repetitions to kind of change your brain's thought process to master something new. Well, you would have to untrain just pulling the gun and being able to press the trigger because you would have to pull the gun out while depressing a manual safety and coming down range with it. So it just, it adds an additional element. And the only reason why I was leery about that is because not everyone takes utilizing your service weapon the same way that say I do. You know, my, my wife loses her mind because I stick stickers to the wall and I sit home and I do dry fire drills hundreds of times and it's annoying and it's loud and it's chaotic. But I do it because it's just, it allows it to become a subconscious reaction in the event someone tried to attack me or someone else. My brain can go on autopilot and do what it needs to do because I've done so many repetitions. I know that's not a reality for ninety-five percent of our police force. Not all of them are gun people and I don't expect them to be. Everybody comes to the table with different skill sets and that's okay. But when you change something like that, it almost requires them to have to take themselves out of that place and say you need to do dry fire repetitions. You have to ingrain in your brain that if someone tries to kill you or somebody else, you need to use it. You can't just pull out and pull the trigger, it will not go off. You have to defeat something else. And if you haven't trained that in high stress, when the physiological aspects of stress come in and you go to tunnel vision blackout and everything's caving in around you and you just keep pulling the trigger because that's the only thing your brain's done a thousand, thousands of times and it never goes off, it just won't go off. And so that was one of the reasons why the chief of police told me that she asked me to put together this type of stuff because that seemed like a farther, I guess you could say, goalpost than giving people a stained striker fired pistol where there's no new movements, there's no new steps. It's just a different platform that's been used for
Got it.
much longer periods of time.
Got it. Here, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
Okay, so what exactly are you asking for top dollar wise, please?
This, this isn't a.
This is. I know, but I have a follow up question.
Okay. Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand?
I would say top dollar would be getting all the way to the full packages. So I guess you could say twenty-four, forty, yeah, twenty-five thousand.
All right. Deputy Director Paquette, is it in your budget? Is it currently budgeted?
No.
Okay. I would challenge you, when this comes back to the city commission for adoption, I'm assuming that's the way you're going, that you try to find maybe one third of that in a different line item so that you're absorbing some of that that's already in your current budget. And I'm pretty sure it can be done. Because everybody could do it in their department. So that's a challenge to whoever handles that. Maybe Danny will be back by then, I don't know. All right. My other question's a liability question. I know in the past, a lot of officers like to purchase their own firearms when new ones come on board.
What do you, what do you mean purchasing these ones or like our old duty guns?
Purchase the old ones that they have. I'm a police officer, I have a firearm, I'm getting a new one, I have the opportunity to purchase the old one.
That is.
Knowing that there could be a liability issue with those guns, how does the city set themselves not be liable?
So, I'll say, I don't know if you want me to?
I'm looking at the attorney at the moment.
I don't think the.
Wouldn't we just not offer them for resale?
Well, I've seen two different things, just if you don't mind. So Connecticut banned resale of their guns at all. They didn't want the public to get them, they didn't want anybody else to have them, so they banned them, locked them away forever. There was other departments that banned the usage of them, created a liability release form for the city, the department that they work for, that if an officer purchases their gun back, they're buying it with full knowledge of these accounts and they're still buying it underneath the awareness of that. And so then basically indemnifies the city from that liability.
Is that what we would do?
Yeah, I mean, there's different options. Those are two of them. I mean, you can also, I mean, you can also look at selling them, you know, to a gun range or something like that, not just for the officers, not allow it to go to the officers. But you can do a liability release, absolutely, or just not resale.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's like with Acme Sports, they're willing to purchase them back with the knowledge of, I mean, that's why the price is two seventy-five. Because before all this started happening, the buyback price for a SIG three twenty is like five hundred dollars. And that's for a used, you know, department heavily used firearm. But now this has been dramatically, and that's high. I've seen places lucky to get a hundred and seventy-five as a buyback for these guns, so.
What's the controversy on red dots?
What is the controversy? Well, a lot of people think that they're not much better and it causes an additional problem with, you know, not being able to see a dot if your lens gets foggy or if it gets dirty or all those types of things. But without getting way too into the weeds, right? The ones that I presented to you are called closed emitter red dots. So all that means is the red dot will be cast without anything being able to get into where the red dot's cast from. So if both your eyes are open and you're looking at a target and you bring a red dot up and the whole lens is fogged completely over, the dot's still on your target.
I just heard things about people who think relying on red dots isn't a good.
Our key problem.
A good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I've, every single one of my firearms that I own has a red dot. The oldest one that I have is eight years old. It's got the same battery in it than when I bought it and it's never died. So that's my personal experience with them. I'll say, and like, as you guys have been fully aware and you can ask my wife, I shoot my guns all the time. So it's not like it sits in my safe off. It's being used almost every weekend, if not daily. So I've had good experiences with them. That's not to say that I'm the master of it all. I'm just saying in my personal experience, they're extremely effective. It's dramatically improved my shooting. It's allowed me to be much better. Um, and I think it could be a dramatic improvement in addition to our department. But I understand the cost factor is significantly more. So I wanted to bring it to you guys just so you could see it. That's not like a, you know.
Very good. We're not going to have too many more questions because we've spent a lot of time on the gun. So thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have any really burning questions out there? Thanks.
Thank you very much. This is very helpful.
Next on the agenda, public comment not relating items on the agenda. Anyone? Sir, please. I keep going up and down with the lights.
Pretty much it's a slideshow and then I have it on Word and Microsoft that'll just kind of speak to you. I don't have to do it.
Documents, okay, project.
Does it all fit in five minutes, sir?
It's less than that.
Okay. Could you identify yourself and give us your address, please?
At the microphone. Sidhu, three ten Rose Avenue.
Did you get it, Karen?
I did not.
Joshua Sidhu, three ten Rose Avenue.
Have you spelled your last name?
S I D H U. It's all in the document too.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, you can, you can go ahead.
Okay.
I just need to turn the volume up.
Bluetooth, Bluetooth is connected. Bluetooth connected.
We don't want to play.
Do you want me to pause?
My phone.
Okay.
I just wanted to show you this. I guess we can scratch that, but I'll speak. I think we just need more resources. The townies or whatever have you, they don't come to the library. They don't even, some of them don't even know it's here. They try to go to Ferris, they don't know Ferris has a rec center. So I just wanted to highlight that we could use more than just having people come here for tourism. And I believe I sent everyone a copy of my speech.
Is that it? Okay.
You did a better job than me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any opinions?
What, what's bottom line? I didn't fall over. You showed all the things we have and then you're saying people just don't know that we have those things?
Well, like a recreational center, like you guys brought a splash pad, you got a skate park. Well, people don't know that they have a rec center at Ferris, they don't even know they can go to Hawaii. No, they don't feel welcome. They're. I don't know, just when I called the homeless shelter, I asked them who they communicated with as far as Michigan Works, CMH, they asked me why I asked so many questions. So I, I feel like if we all work together, we can find more resources, more knowledge, technology, everything. It's all available.
Okay, thank you. There are no public hearings, general business? Oh, please.
I, I do have a comment on, on what I think Josh was trying to, to expose and to show up there. I noticed that over the years I've been here, we've been here now eight, nine years with the taxi service, with now the bookstore. We've noticed a significant increase in the homeless on the streets. And there used to be more funding to help get these folks to places that could help. There used to be, I, I used to probably do, I'd say ten, fifteen runs a month to get people to Grand Rapids homeless shelters because our shelter was full. Out to Muskegon, out to Cadillac. And those funds are no longer available. Those homeless folks are taking up residence, whether it is behind stores, whether it is hiding on the trails, whether it is in the state forests. Um, we see them around a lot more. And the communication amongst everybody might help. And I think Josh was coming here asking for you guys, because you are our leaders, to, to. to, to bring this to you guys' attention, and hopefully see you guys be able to make a difference and to help out the people in our community who need that help. That's, that's where I, what I saw, that is what I wanted to reflect with you guys and to share my perspective on.
Please read my essay. It's very good.
Thank you.
What is your name?
My name is Chris Densmore. Three seventeen Ives Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day, guys.
Any more public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to the general business section. There is a resolution to approve the wastewater treatment agreement between the City of Big Rapids and the Charter Township of Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, our partners, we have two in our wastewater system. One is Big Rapids Township, and you've previously, uh, approved, uh, amended contract recently for Big Rapids Township. And we have now the same one for Green. Uh, um, thanks goes to the mayor and Karen, uh, and others, certainly Green Township for, for signing. Uh, it's just, it's a, it's a nice achievement, and, uh, it feels good to get back on level ground with, uh, all of our wastewater contracts. And so we have it for you tonight, approved by Green Township, and recommend the commission approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
And a second. Further questions regarding the agreement on the wastewater and Green Township? Anyone? Hearing none, we could vote. Karen?
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes. Thank you. Next, a resolution approving the transfer of some funds for the library for a new rooftop air conditioning unit.
Mark, are you speaking for the library?
I can. Michelle can jump in if, if I miss something. I, there are three HVAC units that service the library. Two have been replaced in the last decade. And I don't remember the year offhand, but they're more recent units. And this one is not. This one that has failed, this is twenty-six years old. And we have a, um, proposal from our contractor to, that does this work, to replace it for a total of, I think, thirteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars. Part of the challenge is where the unit is at. It's up on the top of the building and needs a crane to get the, the equipment in place. So that's an added expense, because it may seem high, but it is also an industrial type of unit that would, um, service a big portion of the library. Uh, there is some funds in the library fund. I know the, uh, that Lauren, our library dir- director, is looking at talking to, uh, the friends of the library. They have a meeting coming up about some level of the donation. But, um, what we're asking for tonight is to transfer just over ten thousand dollars to get this unit replaced.
So we don't know how much they're gonna have to.
The friends of the library, we don't. I don't.
Lauren's asking for two. She thinks she can at least get one, but we're hoping for two.
Questions? Anyone? Is there a motion for replacing the rooftop AC unit?
So moved.
And a motion, second. Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote, please. Karen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mark, have you had that vendor all along?
For a long time.
A long time, yes.
And they do our work all over the city for.
Yes, all the buildings, yep. Thank you. Had that for quite some time. Next is a resolution approving a preliminary condominium subdivision plan for the Bjarne Son twenty acres. That, uh, was, a condominium was chosen, because if you try to plant it, it takes years and years. And if you do a condo development, you can get it very quickly. So, Mark?
Mayor, if it's okay with you, I would ask Michelle maybe to tackle this one.
So the planning commission reviewed the plan at their last meeting after a public hearing, and, um, we did not have anyone show up that was not in favor of that application. But the plan is, or the applicant is asking for fifty-four single-family homes to be built over the next two years. Uh, we're, they're proposing to do it in two phases. Phase one will have twenty-four units, and then the following units will be developed in the next year. Uh, it will need new roads, sewer, and, uh, public infrastructure. And so we're in negotiations with the developers still on that. That's not part of this proposal. The proposal before you tonight is mainly to approve the layout of the applicants. Um, the next steps would be that the application would come back to city staff and anyone else who would need to be involved for review of construction drawings to make sure they're meeting all of the ordinance and needs for sewer, water, streets. Um, and then it would come back to the city commission once the development had moved forward for final approval and adoption.
Well, she has, you had one response. There was, nobody came to the meeting, but there was that one response.
Yes, we received that after the planning commission meeting. We received one about a bike lane at the meeting, and then we received one about the fence after.
Okay, this is the one about the privacy fence. Why would, I mean, I just have to ask, because I don't quite understand. Why would someone ask for that?
I'm probably just concerned for how their neighborhood is changing, how their yards are changing. I, I, that would be my guess. I, I don't know.
I, I mean, I live in the street, as we all know, right? Okay. So I just can't fathom, it wouldn't be any different if somebody bought all twenty acres and plopped their house in the middle of that, and, you know, asked for a privacy fence? The neighbors on one of the sides? I just find it.
That isn't part of the deal. It's just a.
It's a, it was a comment.
It was a comment.
And I'm assuming you're responding to the proctors?
Um, my response is that we would bring it before the board and that it could go for a discussion, um,
Okay.
with the board, and they could decide on it. But it would be this board, the city commission, because the planning commission didn't have that request.
But you all have not studied it or made any recommendation to us in any way, shape, or form, correct?
There's a fair amount of space between.
I'm just saying, you have it right.
You haven't brought it on anything.
So we're not gonna act on that until the administration brings us what they wanna do.
I was just commenting because of the memo that we got. Um, will this property and all those homes that are being built there, will there need to be a lift station?
No, this is.
It's like it's downhill to, right now, is what, uh.
So why back in the eighties, they couldn't develop it without a lift station? Would that be because it would have been the other twenty acres on the other side?
Maybe. I, I don't know the answer to that right offhand. I know it gets close. So as you're, as you're leaving town, the pipe has to come up, right? If you can envision to keep it all flowing downhill, you need the pipe to be flowing downhill, right? And as you leave out, the pipe keeps going higher and higher. At some point, you have to drop it down. There will be a point, that's not a very good explanation, to say that as you extend the sewer line in the direction of your house and others out that way, there gets a point where you will have to drop it back down, therefore have a lift station. There's a break even.
Well, I just know.
As of right now, Todd said he thinks he can do it without a lift station.
Okay.
He put the line in Mechanic Street as low as humanly possible.
Okay.
So that he thought he could get that end of that development to do it.
Okay. Because when Blakely owned it back in the eighties, and he wanted to develop it, he asked for the lift station. The city turned him down.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't.
All right.
Okay, that was forty years ago.
I know. But I lived at ten seventeen Allen Street, which was the end of the line. And so I understood all that. There was no water or sewer beyond that property at that time.
Anybody have questions on the, the layout, the plot?
My only question had to do with, um, city staff's comment. Um, it was on the second page under roads, so five point one, create another temporary turnaround. Um, wouldn't that be a permanent turnaround, or why was it, I just didn't know why it was temporary?
Well, it's temporary in, s- sorry, Michelle, it's temporary in that at some point, if we continue development in there, it'll keep going, yeah.
The one goes right up, the one turnaround, if you took it out, would go right up to Harding, and we could complete the loop.
And then obviously, there are no alleys. Which it.
That's a style of development that they wanted to work with, so.
The twenty-four original houses, how many, how many of them are proposed to be ranch style?
We haven't got into those kind of details.
There weren't any ranch styles.
But there was one.
There was.
Yeah, sixteen ten.
Got it.
Yeah, and if I could comment, um, I'm Chris Kohane. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll offer, we'll probably have like four or five ranch plans, but, um, there will be by-laws, two stories, and ranches available, so. Uh, if someone wants a pre-sold home, they can, you know, decide whatever they want.
Could you repeat your name for our city clerk, please?
Chris Kohane.
Please spell your last name, please.
K O H A N E.
K O H, I'm sorry.
A N E.
A N E, thank you.
And you're representing who?
Alan Edwin Homes. Or Green Development Ventures.
Now, if you said that, it would have.
Why is it di- why is it?
Most people know Alan Edwin, so.
Why is it different?
Um.
Because we all deal with Alan Edwin. We never.
I don't exactly understand.
It's a legal thing?
Your, you might know a little bit more. Um, but it, it's a, we hold in different, yeah, taxes, different entities, I, yeah.
Karen, I have the same exact request, because we have a lot of seniors here who would like s- one-level homes. And I think there's gonna be a market for those, uh, in that development, because then they can stay on one level and not have to climb. So I'd agree with that one. Thanks.
I have one comment on it, that when it comes back to final approval, um, I will review the master deed and bylaws at that time. They're still in a very preliminary stage, in just draft form, so I haven't done that yet. But I will do that to ensure that all of those documents conform with the city's ordinances before you approve it, so.
Where's the nearest Alan Edwin development like this one? That, somebody, if somebody wanted to travel there and drive through it?
Yeah, so there's, um, we have several in Greenville. Um, so, yeah, they're, they're all over the place. I could get, I could provide, you know.
Could you? That'd be good.
Addresses or coordinates, or.
You did some over in White Cloud.
There, there was.
Ten or so.
We built a few there. Now, we didn't develop in White Cloud.
Right.
So those were, those were just existing lots, yep.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we have new developments in Greenville.
Thank you.
Questions for, by anyone?
Didn't know he was coming, so.
I have nothing else, Mayor.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Do we need to?
A motion to approve the, um, plan.
Correct, but it.
Preliminary.
The preliminary plan, but I think we also needed to say that it, I think you had something in your write-up, that we needed to include city staff comments.
That was for the planning commission.
That was for the planning.
Took care, so we, the planning commission had a list, laundry list of comments that they would like to see. Alan Edwin went back, changed the plan to meet those comments.
And that's what these are.
Members satisfied.
And they're satisfied.
Very good. Could we vote, please? Do we get a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
And a second. There we go. Let's vote, Karen.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Very good. Another step toward having a lot of homes built. Uh, repeat, declaring surplus land. Th- this is an interesting one. If you knew Judge Wooster, who was the district judge way back when, Judge Wooster sold the land behind the post office to the city for some reason, and the city paid for it. Now, we just realized it's still there, and it's still ours, and it's sitting there, and it's the back half of the post office parking lot. And so, Mark, what do you wanna do, Mark?
Um, yeah, just to piggyback on what you said, this is interesting in that when you look back at the purchase, it seemed like a lot of money, sort of, to me, may, uh, but it was actively leased by the post office then, so I suppose there was some level of, you know, an income approach to why you bought it, or how much you paid for it, or what the city paid for it. The post office leased that lot up until, I would say, maybe ten years ago. I don't have that date off the tip of my tongue. They decided they didn't wanna lease it anymore. And it may have been when the annex was built, but I, I don't think so. I think it was, it was more recent than that. Uh, if it's not for the post office parking lot, is, the, what is the use of it in terms of the city holding it? All that was asked of the planning commission, then all that maybe is being asked of you tonight, is to declare it surplus. That's not you deciding anything other than that. You could sell it, you could, I mean, there's a variety of things you then could choose to do with it. But the first step in doing any of that is to declare it surplus per our code or charter.
Meaning that it does not serve a public purpose.
So, uh, we, staff couldn't identify a public use, the planning commission couldn't identify a public use, and are recommending it, it, in that form to you. And, uh, yeah, I don't know if it has any resale value. There have been some of, uh, the neighboring property owners that maybe asked a little bit about it. And, uh, if, i- if you chose to put it for sale, I don't, I wouldn't speculate as to my income might be driven on.
Was eighty-six, is that when I was purchased?
Yes, I think so. I went here at eighty-six.
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to make that piece of property a surplus.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Further questions? You have to do this if you wanna sell it sometime, right?
That's correct.
It's in the RP, though, right?
I believe it is, if I looked at, yes, I believe so, Commissioner.
What I was gonna ask was, are, have we been paying property taxes on it ever since it was, uh, no longer being leased?
I doubt it. Um, but I sometimes, you, I, I, you're right, in that a lot of times, folks, um, think that if the city owns a piece of property, it doesn't pay property taxes. But that's only, as I've learned from previous assessors, that's only if it's being used for public's purposes, right?
But it was a parking lot, so I mean, people did park it.
Yeah, I'd say it's a public.
It's close to downtown.
Right. But I know we pay taxes, for, for example, on the hatchet property. There's a city, a, a tax bill that's delivered to.
A nice one.
A sizable one, and it gets paid. And, uh, I don't believe that's happened with this one. Probably the argument was it's public parking.
It's a public park.
And you can keep it that way, too, in the future, if you want it.
Thank you.
We'll call the question, please. Karen, when you're ready.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Next is a, uh, piece of business that that to do the underground from tower to tower, and bore it under there, was gonna cost a huge fortune. And our Megan Appleby found a grant. And doggone it, she, she thinks she's gonna get the, the big two million dollar grant. But one of the requ- requirements, it's a C B G.
C D B G, yes.
So it's federal dollars, so you've gotta have an environmental evaluation of where that tube runs underground all the way tower to tower. So somebody gets to do that, G R Environmental LLC. That's what that's about, right, Mark?
You, you.
What do they do? Just like, look for seed wells or something, or like, get underground, look for worms, or what, what do they do?
I'm sure it's worm searching, Mayor. The, the, uh, the interesting part about this, you talked about the environmental review, and you summarized it very, very well. But there's also a, a, a shipo. They have to work through a historic review of, of the use. It's, um, it the State Historic Preservation Office is where. So the idea is that you're not, you know, sort of misusing historic sites in any way, shape, or form. And, uh, so there's, both of those reviews are, are here as a part of this quote. And, uh, the last C D B G grant that we had was for the Hemlock Park. Um, it was one of the grants we used to, to Hemlock Park. And this is the company we used to do the same things there. So, uh, they did good work for us. Uh, it's just, uh, nice to have some background with them. But, yeah, I, in terms of the environmental review, Mayor, I, I can't s- talk to exactly the process they go through. I remember more the historic preservation piece, because we had to contact, uh, Native American tribes from, oh, three different states or something, in the last one.
So to sum this up, we need to spend six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, because we might get this. because we might get this two million dollar grant. And if we don't get the grant, it just, just we can apply for another grant.
Yes, you, you, right.
Which businesses?
Another good summary.
Do we have a motion yet?
So moved. Second.
A second. Very good. Questions? Karen, please.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Okay. Hmm, the, um, I think we've talked about this before, but the disc golf, uh, folks have wanted a pavilion out there so they can have picnics out over on that side of the road and and a storage building and a meeting building and and we met with them several times and it was all hugely positive. I didn't realize Ferris' gifts golf, or disc golf team is one of the best in the nation.
They won national championships.
Yeah, national championships. So we just, uh, sounds a great idea to us and
Right.
Uh, I think we all agreed, and Mark, take it from there on this building.
Yes, so, uh, um, the Ferris students are primed to do the construction along with the guidance of some of their faculty and uh, faculty advisors who are, uh, working on campus. So it's, it's really an exciting partnership for the city. Um, so, but we, uh, are responsible for buying the material and we had to put in the concrete and, um, so we have two quotes, one from Big L Lumber, uh, at a total of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and one from uh, Big Rapids Lumber and Hardware that many refer to as cash and carry, uh, on, in, in the city limits on the east side. And, uh, their quote is twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. So, uh, I was excited about that, that, uh, we get to, to work with those folks. And we had, did reach out to, uh, others and, uh, and, uh, didn't get responses. So those are the two quotes that I have, and this is, uh, a, a bit of a time-sensitive issue because they have a specific time when they want to start construction and so that's, that's why we are here without a, a formal bid process.
Their construction professor drew the drawings. We didn't have to pay for drawings. He drew them all up. It was, it was a good thing and they got a young bunch of folks who really are enthusiastic to get started. They didn't want to pour the concrete, so Mark, I have Gruber, I think.
Yeah, we have Gruber on contract for, for concrete.
And they have set the bases for all the posts, so from there on, the, the construction guys can go ahead and put her up.
Um, before you ask for a motion, I need to disclose that my husband, I don't know how you, he's semi-retired, he's, uh, seasonal, he's part-time, but he is an employee of Big Rapids Lumber.
Okay. The, the, wouldn't, is he getting income from Big Rapids Lumber from this deal?
Is he on commission for this deal?
No, he does not receive commission. He receives a hourly wage.
Okay, there's no conflict there. You can vote, but thank you for disclosing.
Okay.
Any questions?
So I can vote, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody? Is there a motion to buy the materials from Big Rapids Lumber?
So moved.
Second.
Further questions? Hearing none, Karen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
It's been a really good experience for me to watch the Ferris construction. It's actually, uh, they have like an association, the students, and it's their actual association doing the work, but their professors volunteered to manage them and do all that, so it's really, it's really kind of fun, yeah. And the disc golf people are very happy, David?
Uh, they are very extremely happy.
Good. Next, a resolution, oh, we didn't vote.
Here we go.
Next. Resolution authorizing the purchase of a used car, Mark?
Uh, yeah, so Mayor, uh, normally in our vehicle purchases, you'll see, uh, sealed bids from dealerships or, uh, folks that can provide new vehicles. Well, uh, the vehicle we're looking at is actually a two thousand and eight, uh, F-150 that is in dreadful condition and needs replaced. And to replace it with the type and, uh, of truck that we would, uh, that we need to do the work, a new purchase is very costly, upwards of fifty thousand or more. Any of, any of you that know the new car market, it's, it's, it's tough. So we don't really need a brand-new truck. I, I mean, it's, it's, we need a new, we need a newer truck, but the idea is, well, why can't we buy a used one? And that's what we're trying to do. And, and so, but collecting bids for used vehicles is cumbersome at best, and part of which is you may select one and get on the next commission agenda or the commission agenda after that, and
It's old.
And it could be gone, right, it could easily be gone. So what, this is a little unique to our purchasing in that you would be authorizing, uh, myself, other city staff, I, I think it's, is the word it is, it's authorized as a city manager, I think. Our, and I would work with Scott Moore, who is our, uh, motor pool, very trusted employee, uh, to find a, a vehicle that could fit in these parameters. So, uh, uh, we're looking at a, a, a maximum expenditure of twenty-five thousand dollars for a half-ton pickup truck that's a, you know, four-door, four-wheel drive. That's a, a six-foot bed. We think we can do it. It'll be a higher mileage vehicle, but it will be light-years better than what we're driving now. And we think it's in, in the end of cost savings, so.
So the reason it requires a four, four yes votes is that we're going outside our traditional bidding process.
Yes.
Is that all we own?
Well, spending money too, don't you have to have four?
Well, yeah, but in the, in the charter, in the charter, there's a specific provision in eight point one oh where if you're going to go outside of the bidding process for purchase over seventy-five hundred, it has to be a request in writing from the city manager, which is in your packet, and then a vote of four of the city commissioners, so.
All right, very good.
Is, are going to an auction? An option?
Uh, I think it could be. It could, you could, yeah, it, it could be. I know they do a lot of efforts to me.
I mean, they have them in Michigan. I know there's one that I drive by if you're going south on one thirty-one.
And I know they do a lot of online auctions anymore too, because if you remember back to when we bought a, a police, or a fire vehicle in Chicago, and, and I think that was found, remember that? That was, uh, found on some auction site, I think, yeah.
Not yet.
Is there a motion to purchase a used vehicle, used truck?
So moved. Second.
Further questions?
I would just like to thank city staff for thinking economically right now in the decision to present this option to us. Um, I think it shows forethought, um, and responsibility that they should be commended about. Thank you.
Karen, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Unscathed. The only question I had, somebody asked me about the manager's evaluation.
I asked for the second meeting of September.
Oh, good, we're down, then we know. Very good, thank you. Anything else for the good of the group? We're adjourned.